Okay, City Clerk, could you take the role, please?
Alderman Revell, I'm sorry. Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming.
Here.
Alderman Fisk, Alderman Berthwaite, Alderman Wynn, Alderman Wilson, Alderman Ruth Simmons, Alderman Sufferton.
All right, great. We have eight of our council members here tonight. I know unfortunately Alderman Ruth Simmons couldn't be here, I believe, because of her funeral this evening. So, welcome everybody to the Monday, November 27th, City Council meeting of the Evanston City Council. I do not have any major public announcements or special proclamations today. Inevitably, I think you guys all heard the good news that of all the women in the world, Prince Harry decided to get engaged to one that came through our fine city for four years. Pretty exciting. So Prince Harry, if you're watching on TV, my bag is packed, my family is ready to go and represent Evanston at the royal wedding. And if by chance my invitation gets lost, you'll still get the royal treatment when you come here in 2023 for Meghan's 20th anniversary from Northwestern University. So congratulations, Meghan and Harry. The other big news, just real quick to share, I know the City Council members saw this today. There's something special when a business starts in this town and grows in this town and really becomes an institution to this community. And today, one of those businesses was sold, and it's our very own First Bank and Trust here in Evanston, which was sold to Byline Bank. So congratulations to First Bank and Trust. It's a little sad, probably like some of those women out there feel about Harry getting engaged, I guess, but it's a little sad to have them move on and grow, but they'll still be a big community bank here in the area. So congratulations. With that, City Manager, do you have any announcements?
Just one. Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, Ivana Thomas-Smith, our Director of Health and Human Services, is here for a brief presentation on our outstanding efforts on tobacco and smoking cessation awareness.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Hagerty, City Clerk Reed, City Council members, and City Manager Bob Kowits. I'm Ivana Thomas-Smith, and I do have a brief announcement. I'm so excited. Over the summer, we had Evanston Township High School students who were participants in the Mayor's Summer Youth Employment Program. They volunteered to star in a tobacco and smoking awareness public service announcement. This initiative was a collaboration between Evanston Department of Health and Human Services, the Evanston Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition Tobacco Committee, and Anderson Castillo, our city's broadcast communications specialist. So I have two PSAs that I want to share with you that were developed. One first focusing on the dangers of electronic cigarettes, and the second on the irresponsible marketing practices of tobacco and e-cigarette companies. And as a remembrance, Evanston was the first community in Illinois to go Tobacco 21, which restricts tobacco products being sold to anyone or purchased by anyone under the age of 21. The PSAs will be shown in all of our schools on social media as part of an educational campaign, and in recognition of November being Smoking Cessation and Lung Cancer Awareness Month, we would like to show them to the council tonight.
Why are companies aggressively marketing to young people, among whom smoking rates have fallen to an historic low?
They aggressively market their products and seek replacement smokers, specifically teens.
Cigarette advertising has been banned from TV for over 40 years, but e-cig ads are being aired right now.
We can't allow history to repeat itself. Don't be a replacement.
That is the first PSA, and the second one is specifically about tobacco, e-cigarettes.
You might think that vaping is safe because there's no tobacco. Unfortunately, we just don't know that for a fact. We do know some things about e-cigs, though, and it may surprise you and disgust you and possibly freak you out a little.
E-cigarettes and vaping are not risk-free. They contain nicotine, which can affect brain development and functioning in young people.
E-cigarettes flavorings are linked to respiratory problems and lung disease.
At least 10 known carcinogens are commonly found in e-cigarettes, vapors, including lead, arsenic, and formaldehyde.
Vaporizers, cloud pens, e-huckas, e-cigarettes, vaping devices go by many names, but whatever you call them, just don't call them safe.
And that's our PSAs. Thank you.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
No, non Smiths.
All right, we're going to move on to public comment. We have 10 people that have signed up today for public comment. I think everybody here has been here before, so as you guys know, we have 45 minutes set aside for public comment, maximum three minutes each person. So today with 10 speakers, that means that everybody will get up to three minutes if they need it. I will give you a little nudge when you have about 15 seconds left, so we can keep everything within three minutes. So today, the first speaker we have is Mike Vasilko, then we have Kelly Nelson, and then Ariel Jackson.
Thank you very much. I've circulated a number of emails to, I think, the entire council, so you know many of the things I'm speaking about, but to summarize, and I hope this will have an impact on how you vote with respect to the budget. I've mentioned with the Howard Street Theater, the budget line item that was submitted in the 2018 budget is in excess of $250,000 more than it should be, if you do the math, related to what the budget was approved to be for that project, minus the theater's contribution, minus what's already been paid. So I've asked for that to be corrected. I don't know if it has. I also was curious if the theater group had made their contributions to the city. They were supposed to submit by the end of this year $104,000. I don't know if that has taken place. I mentioned, and actually, it's more Alderman Fisk than I, that had the foresight to ask the question of the library director about phasing the library construction, not just for budget purposes, but actually for the benefit of the library over a longer period of time, to have more upgraded technology to phase it in over a period of two to three years, each floor, so that there's always at least one floor that has the highest level of new technology, rather than to do the entire building in one fell swoop and spend many more millions of dollars and be left with old technology in a period of a year or two. So I hope that message was received. Also, I had mentioned several times about foregoing the need for a master plan of city lights. I think that's a waste of money, and that money could be saved. So some of these budget recommendations are kind of low-hanging fruit that would prevent you from raising taxes, it would prevent you from having to lay off staff in some cases. And in particular, I wanted to draw attention again to the city clerk situation, and I know it's presented differently, but the fact is, you're proposing a budget cut to that department. I fully support keeping the staff at least as is, if not more. I think you're going to see more and more requests for information, for requests coming through that office, and the needs of staff to address it. They're a group that's elected by the city, the citizens of Evanston, and I find them to be more trustworthy in most cases than reaching out to other members of staff. So I would prefer you leave that budget alone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I was right at three minutes. Very good job. Thank you. All right, next up, we've got Kelly Nelson, then Ariel Jackson, and then Erica Barton.
Good evening, Members of the City Council, Mayor Hagerty, City Manager Bob Kowits. My name is Kelly Nelson. I'm with Victim Services from the Evanston Police Department, and this is...
Good evening. My name is Ariel Jackson. I'm also an advocate at the Police Department here in Evanston's Police Social Services.
So we wanted to come before you tonight to kind of clarify some of the things that were stated in last week's meeting about victim services. One of the points that was made was about forensic interviews, and I think there was a number given that we participate in maybe two to 10 forensic interviews a year. Well, actually, for 2016, Victim Services participated in 40 forensic interviews. We not only set them up, but we counsel the families, explain to them about symptoms of trauma in the victims, we attend the forensic interviews, and we also transport victims and their family members to the forensic interviews as well. So we are actually very involved in the forensic interview process. We not only attend the forensic interviews, but we follow the case, whether the case goes to court or not, and we also follow up throughout the whole forensic investigative process. Secondly, there was a matter of on calls that was brought up last week. Last year, in 2016, Victim Services was called out for 110 daytime and after-hours crisis calls. Currently, Victim Services is on call. I'm on call tonight, Ariel's on call tomorrow. The chaplains are a part of the on-call team when one of the other advocates, one of the three of us, left the Bureau to go seek employment elsewhere. I have lived through two maternity leave, or three maternity leaves during my time here at the Police Department, and there has remained two full-time advocates. And when there was a shortage, an on-call person was added, and that was their sole purpose, was to fill in the gap for on-call services. So that's kind of how we've handled the Bureau in the first place. So there's two full-time and one additional advocate added strictly for on calls. As far as trainings and education on trauma, I've done trainings, and the Bureau's done trainings on elder abuse, child abuse, domestic violence, and sex assault, and a part of these trainings is educating family members and staff members and people in the community about signs of trauma in these particular populations, as well as providing education on these individual issues. So I'll turn it over to Ariel.
One of the other topics that was brought up was the issue of adding a part, or two part-time staff, and would it be cost-effective or not? And I just wanted to speak from my perspective, because originally, in April of 2015, I was brought on in a part-time role to manage that missing piece. What I discovered last week when we were talking is that what Victim Services considers part-time is probably not what you all had in mind. When I was onboarded, it was clearly a part-time position. I did the same background checks, I did the same onboarding, with the exception of the psych eval and the light detector test that you would do for full-time. However, the role was much more of a contractual employee, in that I was paid a flat rate for being on-call. So when it was my week, we were in a three-person rotation, so every third week was my weekend to be on-call. On that weekend, I was paid a flat rate, and that was to be on standby. So that meant that from Thursday to Monday morning, I was available to be within a one-hour response time to any sort of crisis that came in. So I never went into the office. There isn't someone sitting in our offices on a midnight to 8:00 AM or a 7:00 to 3:00 PM shift. I was in the comfort of my own home unless I got a call out. Once I got called out, I was paid an hourly rate for the services that were provided. So the notion that we have these part-time, 28-hour-a-week positions, that wasn't what I did. It was far more a contractual-type relationship. However, it was couched to me as a part-time position, because the director at the time said the chief wanted a little more control over that role. So we're looking at, I think it was something like $170 to be on-call, plus whatever the rate of pay was paid for the actual events. No more than $15,000 a year, I think roughly, for that part-time position. One of the other things that stood out to me is when, is the statement that there have been struggles to cover the on-call with four people. And so I did some fact-finding, because I wanted to produce an evidence-based response, and in speaking with former victim advocates and going through the records there, it appears that there hasn't been no uncovered on-call weekend in over 15 years. So although there may have been some problems, it sounds like Victim Services has always managed to provide an in-person, on-call advocate for at least the last 15 years, is what I could find.
We're at, yeah, we've gone over our three minutes for each of you guys.
Okay.
That was great. Thank you both for coming up and sharing that, Kelly and Ariel.
Good evening. I'm Erica Barton. I'm the youth advocate and restorative justice coordinator currently at Evanston Police Department and also the city. I just wanted to come tonight to speak out on behalf of my coworkers in Police Social Services. I work very closely with Ariel Jackson and Kelly Nelson in Victim Services. I've seen firsthand over the past several years their professionalism, their wealth of knowledge, and capacity for empathy with each of their clients. Losing these advocates would be a huge detriment to the city of Evanston. I don't know anyone who can fulfill the role of victim advocate better than Ariel and Kelly in the entire city. I hope their positions can be saved, and we can continue to work together in collaboration. Thank you.
Thanks, Erica. Janad Rizki, Madeline Ducrey, and then Elliot Zashin.
The city faces a great loss with the departure of Marty Lyles, not so much because of his financial or budgetary knowledge, but because of his integrity. Mr. Lyles, on many occasions after I had spoken, has suggested I am correct. On our many private conversations, I always came away feeling I had been dealt with in a truthful and professional manner. I believe this city faces a large financial crisis due to the continuing lack of integrity of the public officials here collectively as a group and the city manager. We aren't really looking at a 3% tax increase, and that's the end of this. We really, if you look at everything and add it up, it probably goes over 50 to 100%. And frankly, what troubles me is the public officials here, along with some others, are covering a lot of this up. I was recently told by employees that the furlough day may have violated their contract. If this is true, now the city might be facing potential legal problems. It's really time to hold senior staff here in the Law Department accountable for this, if this is true. Breaking contracts, be it a lack of integrity on the part of those who would do it, I really feel this council needs to respond back to me and the city employees here who were furloughed, and that's why this was done, if it really met the contract, because I think that is a very serious problem. Mr. Vasilko's comments on Howard Street, again, trouble me. Do we have another patio deal here? It appears we may not have the money to do this project. Will we be stuck with, it's under $20,000 again, so I can do it? If that happens, I think anybody who attempts to do that should be fired, because you approve a certain amount of money, and no one has the authority to exceed that money. And if it's exceeded in any way, the individuals on staff should be fired. As a citizen, I'm really tired of the double standard here, of the Lake House group may not have any money, be put through a financial wringer, yet this theater group may not have even paid the money it owes the city at this time. I'd like to know what's going on with that. And really, for new council members, you need to break away and start to question a lot of this, because things are going to get really bad here over the next few years. Your victim service advocates are maybe the first to go, but there'll be a lot of other important jobs to go because of all the monkey business here. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Ducrey, Elliot Zashin, and then William McGrath.
My name is Madeline Ducrey. I'm a Fifth Ward resident. Mainly, I'm here tonight to speak directly to the City Council members. Old business, but feeling attitudes are still lingering. On October 9, 2017, you all approved 99-0-17 Amending Zero Map to rezonate 1829 Simpson Street from R3 to Two Family Resident District to B1 Business District. Number two, you all approved October 9 Ordinance 100-0-17 Grand Special Use Permit for major changes for the Type 2 restaurant at 1829 Simpson Street into the B1 Business District. Both the Planning Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, at that time, recommended that the R3 zoning in the Fifth Ward at 1829 Simpson Street stay as is for now, and the special Type 2 restaurant be denied. I thank you, Planning Commission, Zoning Board, Appeals, for all of you for listening. I thank you for conducting yourself in an open meeting in which the public, the people, could voice their opinions. Even if they did not recommend a stay for R3 zoning at 1829 Simpson, they had transparency, transparency and full view, open government for the people. This concerns me, my original complaint, against all nine council members. I'm not going to go into all of this, who say, she say stuff tonight? I don't have the time nor the patience anymore. Okay, at the BOE meeting Tuesday, November 20, where there was no ethical behavior, et cetera, that fell into the BOE jurisdiction, Code of Ethics, towards the behavior of you all, it bothered me. Maybe we need to change or amend the BOE rules and regulation, especially 1-10-2. Lastly, to the full council members, again, you disappoint me. But I will leave you with this saying from Judy Nadler and Marion Schupsmann, I think it is. A government that is not transparent is more prone to corruption and undue influences, because there is no public oversight of decision-making. I hope you think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Madeline. Elliot Zashin, then William McGrath, and then Doreen Price.
Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, Members of the Council, I'm here as a member of Joining Forces for Affordable Housing. We were pleased on October 30, when the council recognized the importance of dealing with the issues of housing affordability, and we thought the formation of a committee with significant aldermanic representation to develop a plan for strengthening the inclusionary housing ordinance was a positive step forward. The Thanksgiving holiday may have reduced opportunities for conferring, but we would like to know whether the membership of the committee has been organized and when it will begin to hold meetings. We also would like to know who the two non-aldermanic members will include. A suggestion was made that a developer, perhaps a real estate specialist, we would suggest adding an individual with experience in public housing development or fair housing policy. The next holiday season will soon be upon us, and it would be reassuring if this committee can meet before then. As you well know, the affordability crisis doesn't pause for holiday celebrations. People continue to struggle to pay for the costs of their current housing or find adequate housing they can afford. A recent study published in the Journal of American Planning Association provides some evidence that comprehensive plans can produce better community outcomes. The author examined whether housing affordability for low-income households is more likely to be improved in cities adopting a local comprehensive plan with stronger affordable housing policies. This research suggests that Evanston should not only be examining the inclusionary housing ordinance, but developing a comprehensive, long-term plan for affordable housing. We hope very much to have an update from the council members who agreed to form this committee. I can provide, or Sue Lobach can provide the citation of this article. You might find it useful in your deliberations. I just want to, do I have a moment?
You do.
Okay. I just happened to be reading through your agenda, and I noticed a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Northwestern University regarding annual payments by the university. Many of the people I talked to say to me, if we only were to get sufficient resources from Northwestern, some of our problems would be solved. I never accept that point of view. However, I think it's worth pointing out, in this agreement, which would be an in-lu payment for properties that the university owns and purchased, that there are major universities that regard themselves as certainly on the par with Northwestern, but Northwestern has come up, that pay significant payments to municipalities like Cambridge and New Haven. So I would hope that the council will look into this, there are articles written about it, and begin to examine that situation. I think Northwestern could do a lot more for Evanston than it currently does. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. We've got William McGrath, then Doreen Price, then Irv Chakal.
I think Mr. McGrath is gone.
Okay, so he's gone, so Doreen, you're up next.
There's really great speakers here, and I want to say hello to everybody. So I support a lot of these things, having spoken previously about some of these issues in support. I was shocked at the end of last week's meeting, when there was an immediate, automatic approval of capital expenses to the tune of a $3 million debt. And the reason I was shocked is because we worked so hard and so long to cut here and there, and social services, a cut and a relook, and a cut and a relook, and maybe no cut, another look, is not a question for me, living here. I've lived here when we had more social services, and none of it was wasted, and I was saved by social services at a time when, more currently, as of last year, social services was nowhere to be found to help me. That includes being as part of the, in City Hall, you need a person there who's going to triage people who don't come in with lawyers, who don't come in knowing the system, who are just as confused as somebody who's being pulled off the street, not understanding why. And I think that that confusion marks our morality and ethics with regard to our care and compassion. In the 10 goals that are listed, I was told to look, I was like really enthusiastic. I thought, okay, you guys are going to capture what Evanston's about. I was disappointed there, too. And I think others will be once they start seeing them, because I can't find them on the internet site, your site. But I did find it downstairs somewhere, and I, in terms of social services, guess what? We're not proactive, we're not identifying that we want to be a leader in any of these things, that we were and are, and I wish I could, the Health and Human Services person, I did not realize that you guys take in interns and all that. You have a high standard for social services, and so there's very little wiggle room for so-called access, and no one I've seen in social services asks for more, and they should. Okay? This is the one group I think should ask for more. And as a citizen, I would support that, and I'm it. I'm at a very, what do you call, the taxes are getting harder and harder for me right now. So I say that with all sincerity, that there are priorities. The city has to get priorities straight, and in those priorities, there has to be social concerns. In your top 10, we should not identify people as when it's reactive, at-risk, at-risk families, that's it. You look at those 10, you tell me where you see social services, social concern, that you want to attract the type of people living here who aren't trying to take pieces you want to attract the type of people living here who aren't trying to take pieces of the lake, that you want to attract people who are moving in considering their neighbors. And my alderperson has gotten me to use the word neighborly more and more. Eleanor, and she's a great example of somebody who has class, who has some advantages, but sees the real need for people like me and others to not have to have lawyers to live here because other people take advantage of their wealth and money. So I want to say thank you for all that you've done. I kind of want to hope and pray that instead of looking at people who need help, just like you look at businesses, call it incentive, do not call it charity. Because now on LinkedIn, you can go on LinkedIn, I've been looking for jobs and stuff and meeting all sorts of great people. They talk about hiring cities and new philanthropies, including Evanston, who was it, the Community Foundation? They should be looking at ways to help seniors stay in place or pay their taxes, and pay them for being caregivers, or pay them, there's an argument in LinkedIn about that very point, that people who contribute in various ways, even the people who do the research here, could be, could be part of an effort coordinated, obviously, by charity, and looked for benefits and looked for results, just like everything else, and use people who are older now and with more health and living longer than anyone anticipated and no one prepared for. And now you're here, as a community, saying, it's time to help me, like I helped everyone else in terms of my taxes since 1983.
Thank you, Doreen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Irv, you're up, and you're the last speaker tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city clerk, and the city manager, I have a request to make. As a novice in reading the agendas for the city council and other committees and commissions, I have a problem sometimes understanding things. And I'm making a request that we do a better job, not use acronyms, that they're written for the average citizen to understand. I know all of you haven't, probably don't have a problem understanding these things, but I do. For example, there's reference made to Special Service Area 4 and Special Service Area 6. I have no idea what those are. In standardizing home rule taxes for due dates deductions provided and late fees assessed, it doesn't indicate the before and after amounts, which would certainly be helpful. Same with SP 14 and SP 15. It talks about a billing contractor in SP 16, billing contractor is not defined. I don't know what you mean by billing contractor, what's meant by billing contractor. SP 17 refers to license fees. License fees for what? Which licenses? Okay, was it all of them, then I should say all of them. Also, some of these things, I could probably dig out of the packet, but the packets have been over 500 pages on occasion. So I'm requesting that the table of contents be included for the entire packet. And that would also help you to find the topics you're interested in looking further into. So I'm just essentially requesting that these things are written for the average citizen to understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Irv. Okay. All right, well, thank you, everybody, for taking the time to come here and for speaking at Public Comment. We're now going to go into the agenda. What I'd like to do is I'd like to go to the consent agenda first today, and let's go through the consent agenda, pull anything off, talk about that, and then we'll come back to the special order of business, of which we have many items from budget-related. So Alderman Rainey, could I ask you to take us through M1 and then the Administration and Public Works?
We're not going to go through special orders.
We're going to, I'm going to come back to that after we do the consent agenda.
All right. So first of all, we're going to move approval of the minutes of November 13, and then Administration and Public Works Committee met this evening, and we're asking you to approve the payroll October 30 through November 12, $2,983,059.09. The bills list, please approve that, from November 28, the amount of $5,406,962.22. The committee approved and recommend your approval for the purchase of insurance renewals, property excess liability, and excess workers' compensation for fiscal year 2018 at a total cost of $547,932. The policies will renew, the purchase will renew all insurance coverage for the city for fiscal year 2018. They are in the second year of a three-year contract award to, and to place insurance coverages. Next is a construction bid award for Chandler Newburger Community Center Electrical and HVAC improvements. We're recommending, let's see what's in here, Amber Mechanical Contractors, we're recommending in an amount of $488,880. Next, we're asking approval for the city manager to execute a contract with the following three vendors to supply water treatment chemicals in response to bid 1753. First is Alexander Chemical Corporation in the amount of $141,000 to supply liquid aluminum sulfate, $37,037 to supply chlorine, and $90,600 to supply HFS acid, which is fluoride. Number two is Polydine Inc. in the amount of $32,850 to supply polymer. And number three is Charis Corporation in the amount of $100,800 to supply blended phosphate. The total of these purchases is $402,287. Next, we're asking approval for the manager to execute an agreement for the City of Evanston's 2018 CIP Topographic Survey for Water Main and MFT Street Resurfacing Projects with Hampton, Lenzini, and Renwick, in the not-to-exceed amount of $46,415. We're asking that you ratify past practice for eligibility of on-street residential parking permits for the 2018 calendar year. We're asking the city council to adopt Resolution 79R17, which amends the plan of operation and governance for the City of Evanston Electricity Aggregation Program to allow that new residents and small businesses be periodically enrolled into the program unless they opt out. Please approve Resolution 91R17, which authorizes the manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Northwestern University regarding annual university payments to the city and matters related to property within the boundaries of the Research Park Zoning District. Ordinance 144017 is for introduction. The Liquor Commissioner recommends the city council adopt this ordinance 346J to permit the sale of alcohol on any given Sunday beginning at 11:00 a.m. This is a change from 12:00 a.m., from 12:00 noon to 11:00 a.m. Ordinance 145, oh, we move to suspend the rules on this one and take action. So I'm moving that also. Ordinance 145017 amends 346A of the city code to remove reference to bake-at-home pizza. This is for introduction. Ordinance 146017 is recommended by the Liquor Commissioner to decrease the number of authorized Class D liquor licenses from 54 to 53. For Union Squared, Evanston is seeking to change to Class A liquor license. It's for introduction. We're recommending Ordinance 147017 to increase the number of authorized Class A liquor licenses from 0 to 1, and permit the issuance of a Class A license to Union Squared Evanston located at 1307 Chicago Avenue, also for introduction. Ordinance 138017 is for action tonight and amends the city code to establish a right turn only from Greenwood Street onto Ridge Avenue between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Also for action tonight is Ordinance 139017 amending the city code to establish truck routes on Lincoln Street from North Campus Drive to Sheridan Road, and Sheridan Road from Lincoln Street to South Campus Drive, on Hinman Avenue from Sheridan Road to Clark Street, south direction only, on Clark Street from Hinman Avenue to Chicago Avenue, west direction only, on Chicago Avenue from Sheridan Road to Clark Street. This is for action. We're asking the council to adopt Ordinance 140017, amending the city code to amend truck restrictions on Sheridan Road from Church Street to South Campus Drive and from Lincoln Street to North City Limits for action. Mr. Chairman, that is the completion of the consent agenda for Administration and Public Works.
Thank you, Alderman Rainey. Alderman Wynn, could you take us through the Planning and Development Committee, as well as the appointments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item is P1, granting vacation rental license for 1914 Jackson Avenue. This is for action this evening. P2 is granting vacation rental license for 1026 Garnett Place. This is for, also for action this evening. The last item is P3, ordinance, this would be off the agenda.
Off.
Yes, at the request of a member of the committee. For appointments for the Commission on Aging, Thomas Giller. That is for action this evening. That concludes the report.
Great. Do we have a motion?
To move.
Second.
Okay. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revel.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Suffertin.
All right, great. The consent agenda passes eight to zero. Alderman Wynn, if you'd like to take us to P3?
Don't you think we should wait till we do the special order? Because there might be other items? No?
Oh.
I'm just going to vote no.
Oh, I wasn't even thinking about that, because, yeah, we are going to, we are going to do special order of business the same, the same way. Let's, let's just do, let's just do P3, and then we'll come and we'll, we'll do special orders.
Item P3. Item P3 is Ordinance 148017 amending sections of Title VI to add a special education, educational institution public as a special use within the I-2 district. I move introduction.
Second.
Any discussion?
Point of information, is there any special required vote on a, on a tax amendment?
City Attorney or City Manager?
Just a simple majority.
Simple majority for this one.
As opposed to some other one?
All right. Give me a second, I'll run through the list for you. I gotta look at it, pull it up on the council rules.
I mean, I think, I think when they cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, we ought to add a few extra requirements.
All right, seeing no lights, this is for introduction. We had a motion that was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay. So, do I need, all right, I'll call a roll. Okay, yep. Alderman Rainey was recorded as a, as a no on that. Everybody else I've recorded is a yes on that. Okay. All right, so that, P3 is introduced, seven, seven to one. Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. And now we will go to special order of business. Oh, no, I, that was part of consent agenda, Alderman. Yep. So we've taken care of that. So now we're going to go to special order of business. I'd like to take this the same way we did last week, so if Alderman Rainey, if you wouldn't mind taking us through the special orders of business, and if there's anything that folks would like to discuss, just ask that it be held, and we will, we will come back to that.
Before I read through the entire thing, say, please take it off, okay?
Yeah, that would be, that would be helpful.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is kind of an important night, we have budget items. First item is for action, it's 128017, City of Evanston 2017 Tax Levy, adoption of the tax levy ordinance, which levies the annual property tax for general fund operations, Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Police and Fire Pension Funds, and the General Assistance Fund totaling $30,000, $30,101,219. The 2016 corresponding levy was $29,670,870. The change results in a net increase of $430,349, or 1.45% last year's levy. Next is SP2, adoption of the tax levy ordinance 129017, which levies the annual property tax for Special Service Area 4 in the amount of $377,551. This represents an increase of 14.6% over the 2016 levy of $329,592 as extended. This is for action. Special Service Area Number 6, adoption of tax levy ordinance 130017, which levies the annual property tax for Special Service Area Number 6 in the amount of $225,510. This represents a 5.2% increase over the 2016 levy as extended, for action. Ordinance 131017, Evanston Library Fund, 2017 Tax Levy.
Remove it, please.
This is removed from the consent agenda and will be addressed by a member of the council. Ordinance 132017, Solid Waste Fund, 2017 Tax Levy. Ordinance 132017, which levies the annual property tax for Solid Waste Fund in the amount of $418,367. It's for action. Ordinance 122017, city council is requested to adopt this ordinance amending portions of the city code to standardize home rule taxes for due dates deductions provided and late fees assessed, all contained within Title II, Chapter III of the city code. Ordinance 116017, please adopt Ordinance 116017 amending city code Section 7, 12, 17, increasing the water meter changes and water rates by 7%. To completely neutralize and offset that increase is Ordinance 117017, which amends the city code by decreasing the sewer user rates by 4% from $3.82 to $3.66 per billing unit, which is 100 cubic feet of water consumed. That also is for action. Ordinance 119017 amends the city code 32, adding Section 3219, creating a transportation network provider tax. Adoption of ordinance 119017 is requested, which amends the city code.
We're going to take this one off, Alderman Rainey.
Because of the ordinance.
The city staff, yeah.
There's an error in the ordinance.
To correct it, the ordinance, yep.
You're right. I'm sorry.
This is SP9?
The rideshare tax. There's an error in the ordinance. Right. Amending city code 101117, Schedule 7, parking violation penalties. We're being asked to amend the city code having to do with parking violation penalties to increase the fine for an expired parking meter by $10 to $20. It's for action. Ordinance 124017 amends various sections of Title 10, Chapter 11, Section 12, parking meter zones to change all meters operating from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. to the operating -- hours of 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and increase the rate from 75 cents an hour to $1 per hour. For action. Ordinance 151017 amends the city code increasing the municipal parking tax imposed from $35 to $50 per month for monthly parking permits at city-owned garages. Ordinance 121017 amends Section 324, Hotel Motel Tax.
Please remove that one.
This, SP13, is off the Consent Agenda and will be addressed by a member of the council. Ordinance 125017 amends the City of Evanston Permit Fee Schedule. The proposed fee increase would increase planning and zoning fees and building demolition fees. This is for action. Ordinance 149017.
Please remove that.
This, historic preservation fees, is off the Consent Agenda, will be addressed by a member of the council. Ordinance 150017 amends the city code having to do with building contractors. This will require any person engaged in the business of a building contractor within the city to annually register for a fee. Ordinance 137017 is for action and amends the city code having to do with license fees to decrease the flat fee to $150 and increase the roomer fee to $28. Ordinance 127017 amends a portion of the city code, parking violation penalties to increase the fine for street sweeping violations by $5 to $40 effective January 1, 2018. Resolution 94R17 is off the Consent Agenda and will be addressed by members of the council. That's the total city budget.
Great, thank you, Alderman.
I move approval of those items.
Okay. City Clerk, can we take a roll?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk. Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson. Alderman Suffertin.
All right, those items on the special order Consent Agenda that were not pulled off passed eight to zero. Alderman Rainey, could you take us through the five items that were pulled off, starting with SP4?
I'm rolling up there right now. SP4, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ordinance 131017, I move approval of the Evanston Library Fund 2017 Tax Levy, which levies the annual property tax for the Evanston Public Library in the amount of $6,965,750 as extended. This represents an increase of 8.6% over the 2016 levy of $6,412,412,610 as extended. This is for action.
Is there a second? Okay, Alderman Suffertin?
Sure. I would just like to say that I support the library's mission, I support the library's staff, but I have a problem with an appointed board, and so I'm gonna vote no.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
I'm totally confused. You're voting no because you don't approve of the board? Okay.
Alderman Fleming?
I also, also, like the library, I just think, given our finances this year, to, as hard as we have worked as a city council to not raise taxes and to be creative with what we did do to raise, generate revenue for our deficit, it's, I can't support this increase for the library. I applaud that you wanna be proactive with your buildings, it's not a great financial year, so I would have loved to hear you all give us another option, if there was a way of which we could have done these repairs, maybe over the next couple of years, but understanding that Robert Crown needs heavy repairs, Fleetwood needs heavy repairs, I can't, I won't support this ordinance.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, I asked Director Danzig Lyons if she would tell us if the work on the library could be done in phases, and suggested that perhaps if the architect were available, that that person might be able to address the possibility of doing the work in stages and how that might affect their budget. Is it all right if, Director Lyons?
Yeah, we're in special order business. She can come up and address us, please.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, members of the city council, City Manager Bob Kowits, Karen Danzig Lyons, your library director. The duration of the main library renovation will take 18 months, so we can certainly have it constructed over a three-year period. We could begin the fourth quarter of next year, construct all during 2019, and then finish in 2020. So, of course, we wouldn't levy any of the debt until it was needed to be paid for. We continue to look for ways to conserve costs. I mentioned to you that we'll be reusing carpeting that was bought 23 years ago, we'll be reusing furniture for Robert Crown, we're gonna be reusing some of the shelving we have in the main library as part of that construction. I'm going to be submitting a grant for $125,000 through Live and Learn for the Secretary of State's Office to help support Robert Crown. We continue to look for ways to phase this project. We were going to phase anyway so that we don't have to close the main library completely, we'll move parts of it around. There was a gentleman earlier that was talking about aging technology and cyclical replacement. That's certainly something that we wanna move to, which is a best practice right now. Our computers are around seven years old, and so we will continue to phase the technology. But the wiring and the data certainly needs to be upgraded all at one time. We will come back with, if you support these projects, we will come back to you after things are bid and give you much more information as we know more information. We have not gone to design development fully or to bid documents because we don't know your level of support. Thank you.
Alderman Wilson?
And thank you for that. It's challenging because, of course, we're trying to spread out the cost, but at the same time, we wanna get the work done, and I think collectively, hopefully, we all observe the fact that libraries are just, they're a contact point for so many members of the community in lots of different ways. I think the opportunity to attend a series of sessions and a lot of the things on Better Governance a few weeks ago, but one of the things that's a repeat point is that a lot of communities continue to look for ways to utilize their library services to improve those contact points. It's comfortable, the hours are good. There are a lot of things, we obviously just don't provide books, and it's a community meeting place, it's a place where people do make that initial contact to avail themselves of other services. We had a public speaker talking about, it's not always comfortable to come to City Hall. It's a great big building, I think in a lot of ways, it's comfortable for somebody to come to a library and start to ask some questions, and I've seen that happen quite a few times in my years of living in Evanston. So, I would like to just, I'd like us to try to be assertive and get this stuff done. Again, Alderman Suffertin pointed out a few weeks ago, just the benign neglect of a lot of our infrastructure has had serious repercussions for costs, and it makes things cost more. So, some of your points, computers, I get frustrated because in my office, in my day job, I want a new computer, but, you know, the internet browser doesn't work anymore. It's maddening. So it's really, really hard to keep up with all of those things, and I can appreciate that about some of your challenges, trying to keep, you know, four, five, six, seven year old technology operating in a way that's effective is, you know, you eventually hit the wall, so I'm mindful of that. So I am supporting the request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too am very strongly supportive of this project. When I think about all of the facilities that we have as a city and their evolution over time, I think our library has changed the most in the shortest period of time of any other service that we provide in our community. If we think about what our library was like in 1995, or '98, or even 2000, it's a dramatically different building and services that are provided now, some of which were unthinkable to us even 15 years ago. I was at a National League of Cities Conference probably two years ago, three years ago, I was at a workshop on the digital divide, and they had representatives of Google and Microsoft and, I think, Seattle's Public Library there to talk about ways in which we could bridge the digital divide. Our library was doing five of the 10 or 12 things that were being suggested by Google and Microsoft at the time. And we do so much with relatively little resources, and so, to me, this makes perfect sense that we continue to make the building and the facility keep up with the dramatic changes that are happening in our community. And I think we were wise to build a new library when we did, but that wisdom has to continue in terms of continuing to innovate and provide services. And as Alderman Wilson said, for many people, the only contact that they have with the city government is in our library, and it's one of the best contacts they have, and I wanna keep it that way. So I believe that this is the right step and that we should move forward, and expanding the project only costs more money. We should get it done, do value engineering, and move on from there.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanna first say thank you very much, Karen, for the time, just to help me to understand the basic needs and infrastructure of the public library, and I do also believe it's a very important resource and asset in our town. I'll share with you all, I mean, my son probably spends more time at the public library than any other public facility, you know, here in town, and that says a lot, and he really values it as a resource, and it's through his eyes that I really understand how important it is, not only for the larger community, but also for our youth in town, and despite the time that he spends in the loft area, did I get that right?
We're happy to have him in the loft. Or anywhere in the library.
Yeah, yeah, and so I'm gonna be supportive, and through our conversations, I know that you're gonna be very mindful of the spending, and if there's a way to save money, I know that you're gonna take advantage of that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Fisk?
This is the first time the main library is in my ward. I've always been strongly, strongly supportive of it, and proud of it, and used it, and I just think we're fortunate to have it, but this is the first time that I've actually heard from my constituents who have questioned the tax levy that we're considering giving to the library. And that's hard for me because normally, this is a no-brainer for me, and now I'm having to think about it, and thinking about their arguments about their taxes, and their fees, and their garbage cans, and how much everything else is costing them, and these are people in my ward that love and use the library. I mean, they've been library friends, and they've been, you know, library supporters for years and years and years, and this is very hard. And so I want my colleagues on the council to know that, that's the word out there on the street, that people are very, very concerned, and I am too. And I wish there was something that we could show them and would be more tangible in that there could be savings coming forward, rather than just, we're hoping there's savings and we'll keep them up to date if there are savings. I wish there was a way to stage this project in a way that we could make them feel more comfortable. But there are people that are really, really hurting, that have been very strong supporters, and it has woken me up to this issue. So, not quite, I wish there was a creative way that we could present this to them that was a little bit, I don't know, more encouraging.
Thank you, Alderman Fisk. Alderman Rainey?
I don't think anybody that has written to me, and I've had lots of comments about this, anybody objects to anything you wanna do in terms of making whole the current library. It's just that there's a feeling that the library is out of control, and it's everywhere. There's a library here, a library there, and I think the biggest criticism is the library at the Robert Crown Center. That, I think, is the biggest complaint. Why do we need another library at the Robert Crown Center? We don't need another library there. That, I think, is the biggest complaint, and I really think that when Alderman Fisk raised the issue of the increase, and nobody from the library came back with any amendment of any kind to save any money for, to show us tonight that any effort had been made, I thought that that was rather telling. And a lot of the work that's being done at the library appears to me to be, and I know there's electrical work and that kind of work, but a lot of it looks very fancy, and very, very cosmetic, and very beautiful, and who wouldn't wanna sit around there? But if you're afraid, Alderman Wilson, if you're, not to interrupt, but if you feel uncomfortable coming to City Hall, an old, stodgy, you know, raggedy place, how comfortable can you feel going into this elegant, exquisite library? I mean, I would feel less comfortable going there than I would coming here, but I'm just being sarcastic. But I just think you should have come back with some savings, and I, you know, I'd like to ask you to chop off a million dollars here. I think it's overdone. I think you could do that, and, you know, I don't see why you can't. And, I don't know, does this have to be passed tonight?
It doesn't.
The library budget?
Okay, so there was that question. City Manager, do you wanna just make a statement, and then I wanna go to Alderman Wilson?
Just to clarify, we need to submit the ordinances with the levies by December 15th in order for them to be levied. Is that correct? So the 11th, December 11th will be the next?
I mean, we are cutting, we are cutting social workers, and we're cutting, we're threatening to cut. I'm not saying we're going to, I mean, we're doing all sorts of things, and everybody's taking a hit and feeling some pain, and.
I'd like to hold the library.
All right, let's go to, I wanna go to Alderman Wilson, because his light is on, and then we'll go to you, Mr. Lyons.
Okay. I continue to be surprised that an argument persists that somehow the library is not a social service, okay? And as far as expanding the library services, it's like I said before, this is a contact point for a lot of people in the community, okay? It's an initial contact point for a lot of people in the community. I've got kids, two kids in college, one kid in middle school, and through my kids' school careers, countless kids have been at my house because they don't have computers in their home, or they don't have internet, and they don't have convenient access to the fabulous library that's in the first ward. That is a practical reality, that a huge swath of the city is effectively denied the amazing services of this fabulous library. And you can say, oh, they can get on the bus, so they can get on, you know, there are ways to get them there. But as a good friend of mine, who's a principal at a school, once said, you've gotta come to my school. You come to where my kids are. You don't expect my kids to get all the way on the other side of town, because you know what, it's not gonna happen. How many conversations have we had about equity and fairness? Okay, these services, despite your efforts, and your efforts are outstanding, but the fact of the matter is, we, as the nine, 10 people sitting up here, and as a community, haven't made a full commitment to that. That's what we're not doing. We're not making a full commitment to the entire community's access to these resources. A long time ago, we closed the small library in the, this is the south branch, in the third ward. ward. But the South Branch, the building was in terrible condition. It didn't make any sense. We had to do that for financial reasons. And you know what? People in the community banded together and opened their own little library. And it was, frankly, it was kind of remarkable. And the council used to control the library budget, but we collectively were so abrasive and hostile towards the appointed people who do that job for free. And they do. You know, these are volunteers. We can't treat volunteers and people that are doing something for free to help our community poorly. So they've spent a lot of time, effort, and energy on this, not to get rich themselves. They do that because they're participating in the community. And these are the kinds of things where it's time for us to step up and make these commitments. And again, I'm supportive of this. I don't like how much it costs, but we have to make commitments to our infrastructure. We have to make commitments to maintain these things. I wasn't on the council when we built the fabulous library. I probably wouldn't have picked to build a building as fabulous as it is. Okay? It probably cost more than what we needed. But it's done. I got to live with what we got.
It came in under budget.
Okay, it came in under budget, still. But we have to, you know, we can't, you know, we have to maintain these things. And, you know, to the point about the Crown project, I view it as a necessity. I view it as a responsible thing to make sure that our community has access to these resources.
Thank you, Alderman Wilson. Alderman Wynn?
I'm going to piggyback a little bit on what Alderman Wilson has been saying, but I also think that I, there are people who I know who are donating to the Robert Crown Center because there is going to be a branch library there. They wouldn't think about it unless there was going to be a branch library there. And I know many people who are like that. They don't care about athletics, but they care about libraries and they know what a library like that will do in that community. I've been on this council 20 years. Over all those years, what we have wanted, what everyone has wanted is to have more branch libraries, more libraries, more access. And over time, it has become increasingly more important as the digital divide has become a chasm for so many people in our community. Director Danzig Lyons has been working on this furiously to try and provide the mobile hotspots, the, you know, the other ways that we can provide access to the community. During the recession, we had people helping, librarians helping people do job searches on our computers at the library. That was one of the most critical functions for so many people. I knew many people who did not have computer functions at home anymore and the library was their lifeline. I mean, the library has expanded its use in so many ways. And the other point I want to make is, we have been starving our library for years. If you look at the difference between per capita spending with us and Skokie and with us and Wilmette, I am staggered that we, I'm ashamed at how poorly we have funded our library over all the years. It's amazing to me, the services that they provide, given how little money they operate on. Go to Skokie, well, actually, don't go to Skokie, but go to Skokie, just walk through their children's library, walk through Wilmette's children's library. It's teeming with books and things to do. Our children's library room got renovated 12 years, 15 years ago, transformed it, absolutely transformed it. We, this is not a luxury item that we're doing. We have been starving it for years. It's time we properly funded it when the funding was needed, and that is now.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Rainey?
I wouldn't dream of cutting a service at the library. I wouldn't dream of it. I just don't think it has to be the Taj Mahal. I just don't think that. I didn't say it was right now. I said, I don't think it has to be. I don't want to cut any services. And besides, just so you all know, the Levy Center, which people were ready to cut, has computers. And if you go in there at night, you will see all kinds of people sitting there using the computers there. That is a social service user, use also. So, you know, I mean, the reason why our library has suffered compared to Skokie and Wilmette, et cetera, is because we have so many libraries. We're spreading our library money all over town. If we, how many libraries do you go to in Skokie? One. How many libraries do you go to in Wilmette? One. I mean, we've used our money differently here. We've used it differently. So we can satisfy the people up on Central Street, so we can satisfy the people over in the third ward. So, I mean, we just keep spreading it around instead of using it more smartly. That's, I know you don't like to hear that, but it's true. If we had really focused on using our money in a more smart way, just add up all the thousands of dollars we've paid on building. I mean, the buildings we have, we have spent money on for this library, for library services. It, you know, it's just like dumping money down a rat hole. Our buildings have required extensive renovation and maintenance, extensive. This library, not so much because it's been well-cared-for, I hope, I think. And I think you've done a great job. But I'm not talking about cutting services for the library, you know, that don't, I would never do that. But I just don't think that we need, of all ti, it's really kind of a slap in the face to the citizenry to come in and say that we have to raise taxes eight and a half percent, whatever it is. It's just not necessary. It could have been done a different way. It could have been. But nobody even made, my concern is that nobody even tried to take a stab at reducing that amount, not even a little stab, when I spend days looking at this thing, trying to figure out where we can get money here, where we can get money there. Did anybody at the library do that? I don't know. Judy Fisk offered them it up on a platter at our last meeting. Please, show us what you could do. Nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I just want to clarify because the conversation has gone a little bit around the world. So my vote is based on what I believe is financial responsibility. So I'm not saying that we have the best library in all 10 counties or anything like that. I understand that repairs need to be made. I would be inclined to support it if it was based on, you know, infrastructure, technology, so on and so forth. I understand it makes sense to do that all at once. I do understand that, having grown up with a mother who's a contractor. But I also understand that we don't have any money or have a lot of money. I don't feel comfortable getting us too so close to our debt limit, although I understand we can raise it. But I know that we're also trying to not raise taxes. And Mr. Lyons, if I'm correct, talked about if we go so close or so far to our debt limit or past it, I guess, you know, we're going to have to pay for this at some point, which I can only assume means raising property taxes, which nobody wants. So I know the North Branch Library has done some renovations and it's very nice over there. They spent almost a half million dollars. I know that there's a branch going to Robert Crown, which I actually think could be great because people in South Evanston can get to it better. And that will be all in, I think, around $3 million. So, you know, I haven't been here as long as you all. I would say that I don't think we're starving the library. I think that, as Alderman Rainey said, everyone's been asked to be in cut. And I would hope that we could either phase this in or just say we're going to do this maybe after Robert Crown. But I have concerns with going to the taxpayers for such a large amount for one building when I sit up here every weekend, we're trying to get HVAC in one place and, you know, save a roof here, you know, these other more, I would say, life-changing issues that need to be done. I did go to Robert Crown and there are buckets on the floor. That concerns me much more than, you know, whether we have the fastest Wi-Fi or whatever at the library. So my vote is not that I think the library is horrible or whatever. I just think that the library has done some things. I think the library will continue to do some amazing things. I think this is not the year for us to put this kind of money into one building.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk?
And thank you to my colleagues that raised some, actually, all of the comments have been very, very good. And this is tough. And Karen, you've done a fabulous job. I mean, I don't, I think our library right now is marvelous. I mean, we've come, it's like not even the same place that it was before Karen came. And I've just, you know, it's reaching out into our entire community and I'm extremely proud of that. But for many of the reasons that have been raised, I need to have a little bit of feeling that there's a joint effort here on the part of all of us to try to, try to make amendments where we can. We don't have to, we just need to be responsible and responsive to all of the citizens in our community. I would love, with some support from someone on the council, to hold this until December and ask you to go back, just give us an idea of the work that's going to be done, where some possible cuts might be made. If you feel you've done that, then, but I would suggest that. Again, I asked tonight if, at the last meeting, I asked if you'd come back with the architect that maybe you might be able to explain some of this and where some cuts might be made. I want to support you, there's no question about it. But I can't, I can't wrap my head around this. And I am very concerned about our debt limit. I mean, that's the, that's the last vote I'm looking at, is approving or not approving the budget. And I'm concerned about that. I want to be responsible. And I think that we are facing a situation this year, if you listened carefully to what Mr. Lyons said last week, we're going to pay for this somewhere down the road. I mean, everything we're doing now is going to come back to us down the road. And so we just can't look at this year, we've got to look at the next year and the following year and what it is actually that we're doing. So I want to, I want to accomplish everything you want to accomplish, but it just, we have to do it, I think, a little bit more responsibly and be able to justify it to our constituents who are the taxpayers footing the bill.
Mr. Lyons? I think a clarification of the nuance between the library budget, the library levy. My understanding is that the library budget contains the capital projects that have been described. Is that correct?
No.
The library budget?
The library budget is just their operating budget. The library capital budget has the capital project for this, for renovating the library. So the operating levy that you have tonight, it's about a $500,000-some thousand dollar increase, is strictly for operations.
And so the library has already adopted a capital budget and an operating budget for 2018, correct?
Correct.
And that those budgets do not come before the Evanston City Council?
The, I will defer to the city attorney, but the, both, it is my understanding that both the levy and the budget are approved by the city council because this is a municipal library. Even though it is a component unit, it is not a library district and therefore it is a part of the municipality.
That's the operating.
Right, so none of this, none of this is for capital?
But if I can disclose the loop, the $10 million library renovation project would create a tax levy next year for the 2019 budget. The 18 levy for the 2019 budget of about $600,000 to pay the debt, maybe a little bit more, to pay the debt on that. So that is how we do all of our capital that's funded by bonds. If you do the capital one year, you levy for the first debt service payment the following year. So, Ms. Danzig Lyons is, the capital budget's very clear. You've got it out there. It's, the $10 million wouldn't show up as a debt service payment until 2019. This is all for operating.
If you levy the entire $10 million as one bond issue?
Correct.
It could be levied in multiple, up to two or three bond issues to coincide with a phased project that would be paid over time. Now, that's not going to change the total of what's proposed, but it would change the way it is financed.
And would you be able to come back on December 11th and detail that? Because I, what I'm hearing the city council is concerned about is the impact on the Evanston taxpayer. And so if you phase the payments versus phasing the project, I think that would accomplish what much members of the council are saying. So would you be willing to come back and do that on the 11th?
I want the council to be comfortable with the decision. I understand that this is a major ask to upgrade the main library. And I am happy to come back to this group or to individuals with or without the architect to lay out in more detail. To be fair, I've been trying to do that for a couple of months and I haven't been able to do it.
And I think, Director Lyons and members of the city council, if I may be so bold, I'm not hearing objections to so much to the investment in the building as I am the impact on the taxpayer. And so if we can come up with a way that spreads that out, still allows you to move forward in your 18-month timeframe, I think that that would give the council what they're looking for and give you what you're looking for. Because I think it truly is, how does the debt hit the taxpayer, not when is the construction done? I'm looking at the council and I'm seeing some nodding heads. So if that would be helpful to the council for you to be able to work, Mr. Lyons, myself, over the next couple of weeks to look at what that funding pattern would be to come up. But again, what's before the council is an operating budget increase.
Right.
So if you're object, you can agree to whatever you like to agree to, object to whatever you like to object to. I just want to make sure that everyone's clear what we're talking about. So if there's a concern about the capital, a concern about how that's going to hit the tax rolls over the next couple of years, then I would ask your indulgence to work on that. If that doesn't matter, then I would say, if you're only focused on the operating this evening, that is what it is. You do not have the ability to approve the budget. You do have the ability to approve the levy. If you approve the levy, it moves forward. If you do not approve the levy, then the library has no money to operate in 2018. And other communities, we would, likely they'd come back with another levy. So there's a couple, couple moving parts.
This is to pay to keep the library running.
That is correct.
So we are not talking about, in this, we are not approving whether or not they do the renovation.
Because their board has already agreed to do that. So they're moving forward with that. You, again, I learned a lot about Illinois libraries several years back. And one of the things I've learned is that when city councils have this kind of discussion with the municipal library, this is the mechanism the city councils use as sort of their bully pulpit to encourage the library board to a policy direction that the council, city council would like to see. So I'm hearing a mixture of all of that this evening.
When, then, at what point, so, this is the operating budget.
That's correct.
At what point do we approve or disapprove of their capital project?
You do not.
So that's already, has already been?
So you would be, but you would be back here a year from now approving a capital levy for the library. Because the library board would move forward with the budget they have already approved. They would issue debt with the council's concurrence.
The council, the council must authorize the debt. So that is the other mechanism.
So you could stop the project once it's designed, I would imagine, once, you know, at that point. I mean, I would encourage you to go down the road you're going down this evening for everyone's benefit.
Right.
Because I think it's silly then to stop the library six months from now from when they're ready to move forward with the project and then not allow the debt to be issued.
Right.
Alderman Fisk?
Well, I'm talking under my breath. I, thank you, Mr. City Manager, for that explanation. And Marty, thank you also, Karen. I think moving this to the December discussion and moving, and discussing it all together again, taking the opportunity to see things broken down, I think will be extraordinarily helpful. And I move that we do that.
Well, and I, I don't understand why we wouldn't just go ahead and deal with this operating budget. I don't understand why we just deal with the operating budget.
We don't deal with that operating budget. The city council?
I mean, this levy, this levy, yeah. If you, it's, the detailed breakdown is in here. What are we going to cut? We're going to cut the work-study? We're going to cut the, we're going to fire some people? You know? We don't have $4 million for the rehab of the building. It's different stuff. It's, that's not what's in here.
Let's see, this is our second to hold.
Second.
Okay. So we're going to hold over till, there doesn't need, I don't think that needs to be held, does it? Okay. No, okay. So that item will be held, will be brought up again on December 11th. Alderman Rainey, can you go to SP 9, the next one?
Only if I can get to...
Only if I can get Marty Lyons or the city manager to answer this question.
Sure.
On page 14 of our packet tonight.
What page, Alderman Rainey?
Page 14. Middle of the page, under the indented list there, the sum says "Total Levy, Excluding Debt Service and Library," $30,101,219. Where do I go to see debt service and library?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, city manager, Clerk Reed, you would go to the cover memo of the report and then into the individual. So for the library, there is a library report that we were just discussing and has a library levy separate from the general operating levy. And it does get confusing for new members of the council. In the last two years, we have put both pension levies, because that's a federal, that's a change in the Government Accounting Standards Board requirements, so both pension levies went into the general operating levy now. So it's, you know, some of you think that's a little confusing, it is, because it's changed in the last two years. So that $30 million is operations, IMRF pension, police pension, and fire pension, and then the library is a separate ordinance because we want it to show up separately on the bill. I'm sorry, Alderman Rainey.
Where is debt service and library?
Debt service is never levied by the city, and so it's only a point of information. Every time we issue a bond ordinance, we send the bond ordinance off to the county, giving them specific instructions to levy for 20 years an amount to be collected to pay back the bonds. And the only way we affect that levy done by the county is on December 11th, we will bring to you the abatement resolutions that say, "County, we have $22 million in debt service to levy, we'd like you not to levy about $10 million." That's what we'll be, I'll be coming forward with you next on the 11th to say, "Please don't levy $10 million, we'll pay for it out of the water fund, the TIV funds, et cetera." But the county levies that directly on Evanston residents on our behalf from the bond ordinances as we pass them every year. So it is about 40 to 41 million, I'm sorry, I don't have it open yet, when the debt service is included, but it's $30 million that we levy directly through our ordinance.
Oh, thank you.
And we do, in the cover memo, we do try to explain that the net impact, that 2.95% increase overall includes the debt service levy. We don't, many communities don't even talk about their debt service levies because their county does it. We try to make sure Evanston residents understand everything that is going to happen with the tax levy, whether it's from a bond or from an operating levy. That's why we talked about the library tonight in two different ways, operating and bonds.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, SP9.
Mr. Mayor, that's correct?
Yes, please.
SP9. Ordinance 119017, amend city code, section 3-2 by adding section 3-219, transportation network company tax, which would implement a 20 cent tax per ride, tax on rides provided by transportation network providers, otherwise known as rideshares. This is for action.
Second.
Second, as amended.
The reason it was taken off is there is an error in the ordinance noting 20, 40 cents per ride, it should be corrected to 20 cents.
Okay, great. So as amended, it's now 20 cents for SP9, seeing no lights. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle? Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Suffernin?
All right, SP9, ordinance 119-0-17 passes the city council 9 to 0. Alderman Rainey, SP13?
13, right. Ordinance 121017, amends the city code, section 324, hotel motel tax, to include vacation rental units within the purview of the tax. In addition, staff proposes levying a 7.5% tax on the gross rental receipts from the leasing or letting of vacation rental units. I move approval.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Alderman Fleming?
Yeah, so I put this up, I won't support this, not because I don't, I won't support this because we, last week, took a vote not to support the commercial B&Bs, and I don't, I know that one gentleman who has an Airbnb in my ward has it because he has a child in college, and he is trying to supplement his income to pay for that and also offset the recent tax increase that we all felt. And so to tax him and not tax our commercial Airbnb, I think is just unfair. I know there was a conversation about the Airbnb and all the things they can't do as compared to a hotel, but there are also things that Airbnb is not doing as compared to a hotel, and so I'm not sure why we decided to separate those, but for that reason, I will not vote for this tax on Airbnbs.
Thank you. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, for many of the same reasons that Alderman Fleming just expressed, I'm also not going to support this. I was fine with not taxing the commercial Bs and Bs until this, the tax on Airbnb was suggested. I believe my math was correct last time, that based on hotel vacancy rates of about 70%, the commercial B&amp;B operating at 70%, the two commercial B&amp;Bs operating at 70% would have yielded the city between $16,000 and $70,000. And I think that the letters that we've gotten in response have suggested that we give the commercial Bs and Bs time to rev up and get fully occupied, but I think that would fall under economic development rather than under relieving them of the responsibility of paying this tax. I will not tax a small mob and pop Airbnb and not tax a commercial B&amp;B.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
I share all of the opinions of Alderman Fleming and Alderman Fisk. To tax the Airbnbs and not tax the B&amp;B is just patently unfair and inequitable. They both provide lodging, overnight lodging, there's no difference.
Okay. Seeing no more lights, city clerk, could you take the roll?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
No.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Nguyen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Suffernin?
Four to four. So that, that leaves me. I'm an aye on this. So it passes five to four. That's SP13, okay. Alderman Rainey, if you go to SP15?
Ordinance 148017, amending the city code under fees, increasing historic preservation fees. These fees were last updated in 2008 and would bring fees in line with similar zoning review fees. It's for action, I move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
So there is a second on SP15, okay. Alderman Fisk?
I was hoping there, for a minute, but no, no deal. Okay, well, I'm opposing this for the reasons I stated last time, is that I think it singles out persons living in landmark homes and in historic districts who actually are asked to spend more money on the renovation of their houses in many cases than the owners of other properties are, regardless of whether they have to pay for zoning review or whatever. Paying for zoning review is fine, but adding an extra fee because they happen to live in a historic district and want to make renovations to their house, I think is unfair. Thank you.
All right, seeing no further, no further discussion. City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
No.
Alderman Braithwaite?
No.
Alderman Nguyen?
No.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Suffernin?
SP15 passes the city council 7 to 1. Okay, Alderman Rainey, can you take us to SP19?
Resolution, Resolution 94R17, fiscal year 2018, budget of the city of Evanston. Our staff is recommending that we approve this resolution, which will adopt the 2018 budget of the city of Evanston in the amount of $335,942,876. I move approval.
Is there a second? Okay. Open for discussion. Alderman Rainey?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, on page 20 of the proposed budget is a representation of the athletic tax for 2000, I believe, 17 and 18, representing that $1 million is raised each year by the athletic tax. The athletic tax was, there's two parts to the athletic tax. One is a state portion of the athletic tax, which is regulated at 3%, and the other piece of the athletic tax, I believe, is at 8%, and that's the city portion. That has not changed since 1986. That's 31 years ago. City manager projects that a 1% increase in that tax will generate $100,000. So I am moving to increase that $1 million to $1,100,000 with the addition of a 1% increase in the athletic tax to 9%. And my recommendation for the use of that $100,000 is to apply it towards the two victim witness workers that are currently in the police department, that will remain in the police department, overseen, I imagine, by the human services department, and whatever configuration we work out with the part-time people.
Is there any discussion?
In other words, I want the $100,000 to go into the general fund to be used, because I feel I want to support adding somebody, I need to come up with some revenue.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the motion would be correctly to the direct staff to bring back an appropriate ordinance to amend the tax. The tax is not on the agenda this evening, you would need to do that either by resolution or ordinance, by ordinance, so we would, if this motion were to pass, we would then bring back an ordinance at your December 11th meeting.
Okay, and just a question that I have. So the tax, the city tax on their athletics, you're saying is 8%, you're saying that percentage hasn't changed, but presumably ticket prices have gone up and we make more, right, each year, because ticket prices go up?
Our revenue is exactly the same all the time. It's projected at $1 million, and it's, I don't know if they, if they pad the revenue they send us, but it's $1 million, and there might be a secret sauce here someplace, but it's a million dollars. We, I know for years and years and years now, I know other members of the council remember that, that we can count $1 million on that athletic tax. So I want to start counting on $1,100,000. 1986, ladies and gentlemen, that was the last time we tinkered with that athletic tax.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to have city staff come back with an ordinance for an increase to the athletic tax. City Clerk, could you go ahead and take the roll?
Alderman Revelle?
Aye.
Alderman Rainey?
Aye.
Alderman Fleming?
Aye.
Alderman Fisk?
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite?
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen?
No.
Alderman Suffernin?
Aye.
All right, so that motion passes 7 to 1 to have city staff come back with a draft ordinance for the council to consider on the athletic tax. Okay, any other items for discussion? Alderman Fleming?
Yes, I would, is this the time we can discuss the victim services workers, is this the appropriate time in the meeting?
Sure.
All right, so I want, want to thank Director Thomas for rewriting the job descriptions. I think that they, for me at least, read to have a little more of the feel in which our community is expecting these jobs to be. Is Director Thomas still here, or did she? Oh, sorry, I didn't see you. Just to clarify, and I know a job description is not all-inclusive, and I don't expect this one to be, but if you can just speak a little bit to some things that aren't laid out in here that I think the community values from these positions, like attending court dates and helping victims file appropriate paperwork and such like that, if you can just kind of speak to that so people understand what we're not getting rid of.
Sure.
Page number, Alderman Fleming?
I'm sorry, so the, the job descriptions came in a separate email today, so that's where I have them opened up.
And they're on the agenda page of the website.
Okay, where?
And they're also on the agenda page of the website where the city council agenda packets are located, but we also sent an email this afternoon.
At what time?
At--
It was like 4 o'clock, maybe. So they're on the agenda page of the website, if you look under like documents and presentations, I believe.
It was sent by Suzie at 3:09. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bockowitz, city council members, Evanda Thomas Smith, Director Evanston Health and Human Services. So I think, to address your concerns, the job description just gives a scope of the body of work, but from a community standpoint, I think it's important that, I reiterate, that the tasks are not exhaustive, they really support what's needed. So things that have been needed in the past is support during a court appearance, support maybe walking through the process of a protective order, maybe support when a trauma has occurred, like a sexual assault or an attempt of such kind. Support can be the interruption of the cycle of violence, whether it's perpetrator training, whether it's education and workshops in the community. So those things will still be nuances of the, some of the current tasks that are offered, but in the proposal, I did offer, also, we did have some gaps. So again, these tasks, they are really indicative of what the individual victim may need, but things like physically going to a court appearance and supporting that victim, that will still happen, and walking people through a protective order, that will still happen, and maybe working with other family members that have been exposed to the trauma of that victim, that will still happen as well. Is that what you're getting at?
Yes, that is, because those are the types of things that people--
Right.
--are very concerned about not being available anymore.
Those will continue to be available.
And then can you just speak to the physical placement of the senior, or human services advocates, if this is the new title?
Sure, so what we've proposed is that the advocates will still be housed in the police department to still provide that synergy and connection with the actual officers. But I think it would also be a consideration to have a co-location so that the like-minded staff can also work with an integration in the department. So futuristically, it makes sense that they're housed at the police station for continuity of service, but I think there'll be some opportunity to align with other staff members in the human services division as well. So there may be some opportunity for them to come over. My hope is that if these positions are integrated into the department, they would join in with the staff meeting, so there's some integration of support as well with like-minded other individuals with the same, similar skill set.
Okay, and then one more question, speaking to the 24-hour coverage. So I can't find it now, but there was three-- So I can't find it now, but there was three scenarios, I believe, that were proposed somewhere that I can't find. So how would those work if we had three people, four people, assuming they would take, like Ms. Ariel talked about earlier, every third week you're on call for the overnight, that is part of their pay? Is that an additional contracted pay?
So currently, in our department, our inspectors have what's called standby pay, and basically what that means is that they rotate in a schedule and they're required to be available if called out for a property standards issue, or if there's a restaurant fire and we have to close down a facility or to reopen it. So our current inspectors in our environmental health division operate under the standby. So they work full-time, and then they rotate, we make what's called a call-out schedule. I think we do that in CD for building officials, for structural damage, and we do standby pay, which is a flat rate pay for those individuals that are on call, whether or not they're called to actual scene or not.
All right, thank you. And so my, I guess what I would like to support here is scenario number three that you have available. It gives us one hundred and thirty-one hours of coverage with two full-time and two part-time staff, because there's about one hundred and fifty-eight hours in the week. So I think that that would be a scenario that I would like to see us implement, and I thank you for working through this process. I would just say this was eye-opening for me in terms of learning what the department even does, but then also understanding what needs to be worked on. So I also would propose that the women we have there are kept in place, but I know we're not necessarily deciding that tonight, but I think scenario number three is one that provides the best coverage, keeps a continuum of care, and keeps enough support since we don't, you know, want to have this population be one that's underserved with the risk of not having that overnight, particularly the overnight call-out options.
If that's a motion, I would second it.
Oh, so that is my motion.
I'd second it.
Can we call the question? I didn't see any votes, I'm just asking. I just had a question for the city manager. So what's the, with that option, with the two full-time, two part-time, what's the savings?
Director Starly. This is Deputy City Manager Starly.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Clerk Reed, City Manager Bob Kowitz, Eric Starly, Deputy City Manager. We had, with the scenario three, the savings as proposed would be a hundred and forty-one thousand dollars. We had originally budgeted the four positions at four hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and so with this proposal costing the city three hundred and ten thousand, the savings is one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars.
And what's the bottom line, then, for the reserve that the city manager was...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry. So three eighty, is that not the number?
Three, we would swap that three eighty for three ten.
Okay, so let's swap that.
And then the overall savings would be one forty-one.
So the overall savings compared to the cost of providing the service in the police department with the current configuration of staff, the four full-time, which were budgeted?
Correct.
Okay, so then you take that, and we're five thirty to the good, does that include the hundred thousand for the admissions tax?
Probably not.
Okay.
Okay, so with that going with two full-time, two part-time, we still have five hundred and thirty thousand dollar reserve.
And if you add a hundred thousand for the admissions tax?
Well, if you added that, if that came back to the council and passed the council, that makes it six hundred and thirty thousand you could look at, okay?
Yes.
All right, so we've got a motion that was seconded to go with scenario three that was up there with the, for two full-time, for victim services, and two part-time. Alderman Fleming?
Sorry, I had one more question. Sorry, I just wanted to confirm that I knew this because it was mentioned before, the part-time staff on there are working twenty-eight to thirty hours a week, is that correct?
Mr. Starly. Part-time staff.
Just wanted to confirm. Part-time staff are twenty-eight to thirty hours a week, was that correct?
We budgeted them at twenty-eight hours.
Twenty-eight hours a week, okay, thank you.
Okay, city clerk, could you go ahead and take, oh, excuse me, for one second.
So the three sixty, three sixty is for the three, okay.
Whatever.
Okay, so we've...
I just wanted to thank you.
Okay, all right, no worries. All right, so we've got the motion on the floor that was seconded for two full-time, two part-time. City clerk, could you take the role on this, please?
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Wynn.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson, I'm sorry. Alderman Suffert.
All right, that motion passes eight to zero. Is there anything else that people would like to talk about under SP nineteen?
So with the other ordinance.
My bad. So we'll come back with the library, separate. No, the library's not included.
But the athletic taxes.
I'm sorry? Okay, so we should just hold it?
So I move that we hold the SP nineteen to the eleventh.
Okay.
Just so we make sure we've got every number correct and...
Mm-hmm. All right, so we're going to hold the vote overall on that. Clerk Reed wanted to just make a comment about his budget, and then we'll go to Alderman Rainey.
So I'm noticing here that the, while the baseline budget was a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars, the proposed budget for next year is a hundred and thirteen thousand, which is a cut, my budget, the clerk's office's budget from, this is what I'm seeing here in the packet, but the clerk's office's budget in two thousand and seventeen was budgeted two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, and it's now going to go down to a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. That's what's proposed in the two thousand and eighteen budget.
I believe that's correct, so it'll be the four percent decrease and the elimination of the one budgeted position.
So it went from two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that's because we eliminated one position? Four percent is seven thousand dollars.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, Clerk Reed, Manager Bob Kowitz. The difference is, again, as the city manager pointed out, all of our calculations were off the two thousand and eighteen originally proposed budget. The two thousand, if you're using the two thousand and seventeen budget, one position has been transferred to the collections office, so it didn't go away, but it did get counted as a cut out of the entire, rather than the collections office filling, a customer service representative that was vacant, that position was eliminated, and one of the deputy clerks doing the work of passports and transfer stamps was put into collections, and there's cross-training and things of that nature going on right now as well with that position. So more work's being done than just passports and transfer stamps that we're doing, that cross-training between all the CSRs. And as noted, but, I'm sorry, but that's on the, on that page, so as noted, we have a hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine ninety-six as the budget on page seventy-two of the proposed budget document.
And what is that number?
That number is the clerk's budget without the deputy clerk position, about eighty-five thousand. You add that back in, you get back up close to the two hundred and seventy thousand. That was the two thousand and seventeen budget.
The budget here is listed at a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars.
And I'm sorry, where here are you pointing to?
I'm looking at the packet.
One thirty-six.
Thank you.
Page sixty-six of the packet is actually what I'm looking at.
Also on page one fif, on page fifteen.
Could someone please explain what document that you're describing the page on?
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the... I'm sorry, page one thirty-six. I was looking at two different places. Page one thirty-six of the packet.
Of the agenda packet.
Yes. A hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, to be clear, would just cover my salary and nothing else.
So it should be one ninety-one. It should be one ninety-one. The proposed budget number.
The actual budget has the one ninety-one.
Right.
If you look at the actual budget document, so the memo, it looks like the memo has the wrong number somehow.
So we'll review that and come back.
Well, I do have an explanation, though. It is the same explanation that does catch us on occasion, and that is, the proposed budget document that Mr. Starly just handed me doesn't include all of the budget balancing worksheet changes, so it wouldn't have included the three cuts, so we have a, that position was moved out of the clerk's budget and into the collector's office budget, but it's still counted as three position reductions overall, that being a CSR. Help me out here, we had the, the three positions that were listed for city manager's office. Kate, do you have that? Senior accountant, customer service representative, and economic development specialist. Those three cuts are, you know, that change from one ninety-three down to one thirteen includes those cuts, so...
What do you, those are from the city manager's budget, what do you?
It is, but, so they're not shown because we took the deputy clerk over into the collections office, but it's still, you know, that was a transfer of duties. And to your point, Mr. City Manager, we will show a chart that shows how the two budgets work, how we got from one ninety, that's shown in the detailed budget page, to one thirteen, that's shown in the packet.
Let's be, so the baseline budget for two thousand and seventeen, or the budget for two thousand and seventeen was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. I'm not a financial expert like yourself, but if you take away eighty-five thousand dollars, which is the budget amount for one position, that would take you just below two hundred thousand dollars. So to go from that and then another cut down to a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars doesn't...
The city clerk's budget is on page seventy-two. What's the problem? Hundred and ninety-one thousand, nine hundred and ninety-six.
And, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we'll come back and make sure that this is clarified on the eleventh.
Okay, so we're not, so here's, so I think we can wrap this up on SP nineteen. We're not going to take an overall vote. The city manager and his staff are going to go back and take another look at this because we seem to have a couple of different numbers, okay, running through this. They'll come back, possibly put a budget memo together or whatever to get it out to council, and sit down with the clerk and make sure the clerk understands as well.
And I'll include a chronology, when, so when these, each of these numbers went in.
And it should be, the budget should be the clerk, the deputy clerk, and then the miscellaneous expenses.
Correct.
That's, that's the budget, and so, and I believe it's the one ninety-one.
Very good. Okay, all right. Alderman Rainey, did you have anything?
We're going to hold this, right?
We're holding this, we're not voting on this tonight.
Did anybody hold it?
Oh.
Move to hold it?
Okay, great. All in favor?
No, no vote.
We don't have to vote, that's right. Okay, we're done, yes, exactly. All right, so thank you, everybody, for everyone's efforts going through the special orders of business. Next up, we have a call of the wards, so Alderman Revelle, if you'd like to start tonight. Alderman Rainey?
Well, I'm tempted to respond to Janad Riske and his, and to Mike, no, and to Mike Vasilko, but I'm not going to, but I just want people to know that all of the work being done on the theater is out of the Howard Ridge Tax Increment Financing District, and you don't need to worry about money being taken out of your pocket for your, you know, from the general fund, it's not happening.
Thank you. Alderman Fleming?
I would like to remind the ninth ward and to invite others to our ninth ward holiday party and coat drive. So this Friday, December first, from six to eight P.M., we will be down in the Fellowship Hall at Grace Lutheran Church. Everyone's bringing a dessert, bring your family, and also bring a coat to, gently-use coat to share or to donate to one of our schools. So we'll be giving coats to shoot, to dolls, and to Oakton Elementarys. Also to remind people to, starting on Wednesday, if there's a family in need, they can call three one one to get themselves on the list to receive a gift from the mayor's food and toy drive, which will take place December something or another. But I know Wednesday you can start by calling three one one if you need to get on that list, so please do so.
Thank you. I think it's December fifteenth, Friday, December fifteenth, is the date of our toy and food drive. Alderman Fisk?
Thank you. First ward meeting Tuesday, December fifth, seven to nine P.M. at the Evanston Public Library, please come.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to first make an announcement that this Friday, the first, Evanston Own It, will host a service at Ebenezer Church, it's hanging in the wings, and you're all invited. Proceeds of that help to fund the mayor's summer youth employment program, and I'd also like to make a referral to, I think it's the Administrative Public Works, to look at our staff refund policy, particularly sanitation service charge fee on our water bill.
Thank you. Alderman Wynn?
Yes, I, this will be my last meeting of the year because I'm going to be traveling, and I wanted to say a couple of things about, I'm sorry, I won't be able to vote on the budget. I actually structured my travel so that I would get a chance to vote on the budget tonight, and you all know how I feel about the library and about a number of other things, so I hope everyone keeps that in mind. It'll be the first budget I have ever not voted on. But there are two people I wanted to recognize tonight because I won't be here on December eleventh, and first is Ricky Voss, our amazing parking director, all-around person who knows everything about the city of Evanston, and I want to thank Ricky for how easy he made my job over all of these years, and how understandable he made the city, and also for all of his good humor when this job got to be a little bit trying. Ricky was always one who could make a joke about things, but his devotion and his dedication and his professionalism is really, was, has really been a joy to work with over all these years, and he's an example for all of us to strive for, and I will really, really miss him. Then, second, Marty, I know you're already working. Marty, I will miss you so much. I remember when you first arrived, and I just breathed a big sigh of relief because here was somebody who really made the budget make sense, and your professionalism and your dedication and your really caring about the city of Evanston have always shone through. And Marty, I think you are someone who doesn't have a fuse. I mean, you know how people say that they're, they're short fused? You don't have one. I have never, ever seen you get angry, annoyed, maybe you save it all for home, but I hope not. It's road rage, all on your drives home, right? Now, Marty, you are incapable of becoming frustrated, annoyed with all of the numbers of questions, and no matter how difficult they are, you always have taken them respectfully and thoughtfully and tried very much to explain to all of us or all of the citizens why they're wrong in the politest way and why you are right, and I really appreciate all of the really terrific things you've done for us here in Evanston. Evanston is a better place for both you and Ricky Voss working for it, and so thank you very much for all of your service.
We should name a street after you, Marty.
Okay, so Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, everyone.
Thank you, Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Suffert. Okay, Alderman Wilson, would you lead us into executive session this evening?
Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS one twenty slash two A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding litigation. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in executive session and are enumerated exceptions on the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS one twenty slash two A and C eleven.